Has to happen that it takes the most intelligent route and, you know, impacts as few people as possible.
Do you get the sense that the goal of the coalition is to oppose this and stop it? Or is the goal of the coalition to really balance the benefits versus the risks, take a position at that point, and then educate the residents of each of the communities about the benefits weighed against the risks? And maybe just your opinion here.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I mean, the stated goal of the coalition is that we want to gather information and inform residents of the impacts, both positive and negative, of this pipeline coming. Many members of the coalition who are driving the coalition are, wish we had taken a stronger stance, opposed to the pipeline. But after several discussions, Richard was there, Steve Sadwick was at some of those discussions early on, it became very clear that coming out with an anti-position before we really understood what it is we were talking about, because most of us didn't know, would sort of be, not really be a strong position, because we may become informed and it may be something that is the only alternative. Maybe there is a better alternative, I don't know. But certainly, so the coalition has sort of taken a step back in a deep breath and we're sort of gathering, and we know that in, once this report comes out, we're going to have to make maybe a stronger stance. And at that time, I would definitely come back to the board and ask for the board's feedback on that, because if there was going to be an antistance or a prostance, either one, that's not something that I can decide for our board. I, you know, Tewksbury is a member of the coalition, but if the board were going to take an action one way or the other, it would be important for me to have a vote from this board. I know that Wilmington at this time, like Tewksbury, has not taken a position, because they're trying to gather the information.
Other questions, Mr. Penelotus?
Maybe just some comments, really. The, Mr. Wilson mentioned the alternative routes that have been proposed for the lateral that was to go through Tewksbury. And, and there's been much made about the fact that two of those alternative routes impact us more than the original proposed route. One of the alternative routes actually goes straight down 93 and would not impact us at all. And so, I'd just like to point out that even though they've proposed, Kinder Morgan has proposed these alternative routes, if you actually go and read their filing with the FERC, and you can access that on the website, they say here are the three alternatives, and much of it is they have to provide alternatives as part of this filing process. At each of those three alternatives they propose, in each one, they tell you why they won't and don't want to use those, and that why their original plan is still the plan they want to go with. And so, I agree that for now, we don't want to take a particular position one way or another as a board. As personally, I'm not convinced that this is a necessity for the Northeast, and I am, my default position would be opposed to it, but I don't think as a board, we're ready to go there yet. I think the coalition took the right approach to have a working relationship with the company to be able to affect change on the pathway if it does come in. And that's mostly due to the fact that in the end, we can jump up and down and stamp our feet all we want, in the end, this will be decided at the federal level, not at the state level, and certainly not in the Pike House. This is going to be decided at the federal level. And so, it's important that we maintain that working relationship to have whatever effect we can on these routes if the pa, if the pipeline does go in. I do think it might be worth filing some letter with, with FERC related to the alternative routes, just to say that, given the routes that have been proposed, we would obviously favor alternative route one, which does not affect our town, and, and second, that original route would be the next best. Two and three would not be appropriate, I think, they go through a significant wetland area, through our current power line easements. And so, I think it would be reasonable for us to comment on that filing specifically, and, and I don't know if we're ready for, at the point, at this point, to make a motion to that effect, but I would like to. But beyond that, I don't think in overall, the position of yes or no, pipeline is appropriate, because I think we want to maintain that relationship with Kinder Morgan to be able to affect this as it goes forward, because as Mr. Wilson pointed out, we're, we're only beginning this process.
Let me, you know, come back to your comments.
Yes, thank you.
Of motions, but let me reoffer a couple of things. I, I don't know that it's been mentioned yet tonight, but residents who have some interest in this subject, I know we've received some emails that refer to other town websites. The town manager and his staff worked diligently in the last few weeks to put as much of this information on this subject matter on the town of Tewksbury's website, so I think that is noteworthy in the context of if you live here and you're looking for information, certainly not obligated to use exclusively the town of Tewksbury's website, but you should know that that information is there. I also think that, as Mr. Wilson stated, while we haven't taken a position at a lesser level, we perhaps have, because we've withheld the right to survey town-owned properties, which certainly is not a positive position. So, to some level, residents should be aware that we have taken that step and are not neglectful of the situation. And that's been a consistent theme from day one, when we were approached about surveying properties. And I recall that matter came up at the community meeting that we had at the senior center, but the town as a property holder has rejected the request to, to survey town-owned property. And then the third comment, actually, two others. The third comment I would offer is that this board, and I think it was said again by Mr. Wilson and Mr. Panalitis, maybe using different words, but this board doesn't really have much input ultimately. But our conservation commission actually might have more authority, particularly if you reference routes that may impact wetlands. So, people who are paying close attention to this subject and are reaching out to the selectmen should, I would like to encourage them to think about the proper channels, because when it comes to monitoring and protecting the town of Tewksbury's wetlands, this board here has literally no jurisdiction. It's a conservation commission issue. So, you should be communicating with the right parties. And then the other, last comment I have is more of a question, I think, for, for you, Mr. Wilson. I get the impression, I may be wrong here, so I'm looking for clarification, but I get the impression that most of the, most of the position staking that's taken place has been more, generated more from community-based efforts and residents in different towns efforts as opposed to governmental entities. And I may be misinterpreting what I'm reading in the papers. Is that a fair statement? The coalition itself has sort of taken a neutral position thus far?
Yeah, so there's definitely Groton, Pepperell, and I can't remember, the third community seemed to have very strong community activists that are sort of driving this. I would, you know, if I was going to describe sort of their, their motive, it's energy-related concerns about energy. But one of the groups, which has pulled, pulled in a few of the communities that held the statewide, they organized the statewide summit. That was a community effort. That was done by, as a matter of fact, a woman who sort of spearheaded it, I believe her comment was, someone asked if there would be another, and she said, "The amount of time it took to put together this one, I'm not doing it." So, it's definitely been driven by residents. There are some elected officials that have gotten involved from some communities, it's been folks from conservation, there's been selectmen from Pepperell that we've worked with, Andovers, Conservation Commission. So, there's a real marshmallow of people, but it's definitely not being driven by sort of towns or town managers, it's being driven by sort of residential concerns. And we, we have some regular residents that aren't part of the coalition that come every meeting and provide us some really vital information, and they're, they're pretty good at identifying that it's either a pro or, or anti site. So, you know, you have to read some of it with a, you know, not taking all of it as factual, because there's some pretty strong opposition to the pipeline. You know, one thing that definitely the, the coalition felt strongly about was to say that we don't want it in Tewksbury, but it's okay in Andover, was really a wrong position. That was, and so, even now that it's been pushed into New Hampshire, I'm not sure that the people in the room were, you know, somewhat relieved that maybe it wasn't in their backyard, but they still have a concern, those folks that are more energy-conscious, still have concern about that we don't need the pipeline. That's their, so that's a very different thing than some of the community groups may go away a little bit. I don't know, but definitely the coalition is, is gathering facts and waiting to take a stronger position once we, once we have the standing to do it.
And I appreciate that clarification. Part of the reason I asked the question is, I know all of us get communication from people here in town, kind of urging and strongly encouraging, to put it mildly, that we be more actively opposed to this project. And what I've sort of concluded is that this is the wrong place for that. Even if we jump up and down and scream, it's, there's, Conservation Commission has a role in wetlands protection, but more importantly, I would suggest that residents who are motivated by this issue shouldn't abdicate the responsibility to somebody else. We have, on many, many issues, we've said we want residents to get involved. Getting involved doesn't mean sending the selectman an email, it means get involved. And this is a classic example, when I read this newspaper stories, I'm seeing residents in other communities having meetings, not elected officials in other, and that's why I asked for the clarification, because what I think I hear you saying is that the, the body that we have joined for guidance and information gathering has yet to stake out a position. So, my instincts are that's a correct position to maintain for now, until we have more information and a better footing to make a decision. But to address specifically residents here in town who want us to be engaged, I would say, get engaged, as opposed to trying to get us engaged. We are engaged, we've withheld permission to survey property, we've asked you to represent us in these meetings, it's clear that, you know, Mr. Panalitis has done his own independent research, as have others here at the table. So, we're aware of what's going on, because we haven't taken a position doesn't mean that we're ignoring it.
I would agree.
So, that is something that I think people need to think through and be clear in terms of their motivations, what they're trying to accomplish. So, those are my comments. I do, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Panalitis's point, and I'm interested in your perspective, being a representative. If there's a preferred route that has no impact to us, that is a possible route, is there, would that be upsetting the apple cart?
Not at all.
To take a position on that.
These other communities have sent in letters, there have been letters that have come in from conservation commissions, residents, individuals of, of all kinds. So, I actually love that idea, I think, I think it's a, it's a good approach to take and maybe where it's not urgent, maybe me and Bruce can put something together and then bring it to, present it to the board.
Do you do that?
At the sixteenth, and then we can, you know, we, you know.
If you're both willing to collaborate on that.
As long as Bruce is on.
That would, that would be a good, good approach, and we can bring that back on the sixteenth.
That's great.
Okay? All right. Any other comments, last comments on this? All right, thank you.
Sorry we're so long.
No, I appreciate your representing our interest on that, and I know it's, you know, an area that people are paying attention to, so we want to make sure that we give it its due. All right, I want to go back to the agenda. We are on item number 12. This is a disclosure by a municipal employee relative to snow plowing, and it pertains to firefighter Steven Spencer, who is a full-time firefighter here in town. And he is obviously indicating that he intends to contract with the DPW, excuse me, for snow plowing services as a sole proprietor. All of the attendant information was presented to the board relative to the advertisement by the DPW, and it's been reviewed by senior town council, and appropriate corrections made to that disclosure. So, unless there are questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve that disclosure.
So moved, chairman.
Second.
Okay, a motion made, seconded by Mr. Panalitis, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. I'm going to turn to the town manager for any updates you have, sir.
Just quickly, I have a town council invoice, I've asked the board to approve for Katie Leah Brown, an amount of $4,547.50.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, before I call for a vote, just for clarification's sake, is that labor and town council? Just town council? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And then the last item that I asked, I asked Charles to help me with, we have a, I mentioned to the board, we did a land sale of a property. I'm in the process of trying to finalize a larger group of unbuilt locks that others have shown interest in buying. We did this one test case on Apostle, map 81 lot nine, which is on, I think Oak Street, if I recall. And we did the RFP, we had a minimum price of $5,330 that we buttered Joseph Lester and my wife Stacy bid on, and town council was working with their attorney to find a deed. And I asked the board to approve a sale of the lot of map 81 lot nine to Joseph Lester and Stacy Lester, an amount of $5,330. Town council's reviewed everything and approved the deed. Charles, you have anything else you want to add?
No, I assume you have the deed with you?
I have the deed, I have it printed out.
So, this is something we asked you to look into sometime, in terms of moving properties that were, you know, for lack of a better term, landlocked?
They're landlocked, they're not buildable, the process to sell them is certainly guided by town bylaw, this particular individual looking to purchase them for well over a year. I wanted to go through the process with the new RFP and put together to see how it worked, it worked well. Now, we have others that are trying to follow this system, generating revenue, getting lots, and not any value in putting them on the tax rolls.
And the proceeds of that end up where?
Goes into the general fund eventually, to, we'll close this pretty much.
Okay. Any other questions? So, you need a motion to execute the deed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, a second.
A little motion by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Panalitis. All those in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
Thank you, that is all I have.
Okay, before we go to minutes, the last item in your agenda packet, I just, I asked Helen to include, I know this comes up from time to time, and just want to make it known that the police department was the recipient of a fiscal year 2015 traffic enforcement grant. The amount of the grant can go up to $12,500, and there are various components to it, at $2,500 each. One component was speed and aggressive driving, drive sober or get pulled over, distracted driving, click it or ticket program, and again, drive sober or get pulled over campaign. So, those took place in the fall and into the spring and summer of next year, they will take place. And our police department, once again, has done a good job of chasing now $12,000 of resources to help improve public safety here in town, so I think that's noteworthy. I also just distributed to my colleagues, and I think maybe town council and our recording secretary, 2015 meeting dates. I would ask that you look these over, and if there are any particular problems with dates for 2015, you bring them to my attention, and we can try to clean up any issues before next meeting. And we'll edit that if necessary. For the benefit of my colleagues, this list does not include the town meeting dates, so you need to be certain to kind of pencil those in. And what I try to do is stay away from holiday weeks, if there was a Monday holiday, we tried to stay away from a Tuesday meeting on the basis that people may be out of town and not have time to be properly prepared, et cetera. So, you'll see as you look through your calendar, but if there are any modifications that you know already are potential conflicts, are concerns, reach out to me, and we'll try to make adjustments before we lock in meeting room times and all that fun stuff. Okay? So, I'd ask you to look at that. And then I'll turn to Mr. Panalitis for our minutes.
So, we have no minutes ready tonight to approve with the extended meeting we had at our, our last session, and on Thanksgiving holiday, the minutes aren't quite ready yet. So, we, I'll anticipate that we'll have both the November 18th minutes and as well as the minutes from tonight, in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so those will be, we'll address those on the sixteenth. All right, so we'll go back now to our last item for the evening board member reports. Mr. Wilson, did you have anything beyond the pipeline?
You know, I'm going to save you guys tonight for myself. You know, I have nothing further to report.
Thank you.
I'll save it for the next meeting.
We appreciate that. Mr. Panalitis, do you have anything?
Quickly, EDC meets early tomorrow morning, unless that's changed, I think we're all good with that. So, we'll have our meeting tomorrow morning here, I believe, if I check my calendar. Our town center meeting, still, committee has not met, will be meeting shortly to review the RFP before we put it out to the public, out for bid to, for the engineering group to, to look at plans for the town center. And then, just two little items, the rail trails group is having an info session next Thursday evening at the high school cafeteria. I guess it's a kind of a rolling meeting, come in and see the information from four to eight. And then lastly, I suspect Mr. Gay might talk a little bit about some of the activities this weekend, but I will point out that the Tewksbury Habitat Build Group will have the playhouse that's up for auction, and some information at the, the Pi Social Friday night at the church fair at the congregational church on Saturday, and then also be at the tree lighting ceremony on Sunday, so an opportunity to see the playhouse up close and, and put a bid in if they'd like to do that. And all of the proceeds from that will go specifically to the house being built here in Tewksbury, so I encourage people to take a look at that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Gay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll do a couple of briefings. The Little Regional Transit Authority meets this Thursday night, so they're monthly meeting, or five monthly meeting sometimes. Now, the only other thing I want to mention is the, Mr. Panalitis said the activities are coming up this weekend. Friday night is the Pi Social, the congregational church, and the Festival of Trees at the library. But Sunday is the holiday celebration, Crescent Street lighting, two to five, at the library, and it's been advertised pretty heavily, there's going, we're going to have a, we have last year, sleigh rides and entertainment inside, magician, some vendors outside, a chocolate coffee, and I think Harold's Chicken is going to be, they're going to have chicken pies out there, so try to keep people warm. And the, obviously, the two guest stars are going to be there, Mr. and Mrs. Claus are going to be part of the celebration, which I believe will be the highlight of the day when they show up. So, I encourage people to try to make if they can, they're going to, we, as I mentioned last meeting, we addressed some of the parking issues by having parking up at the, at the Tewksbury Hospital, and we're going to have a shuttle bus provided from the Tewksbury Public School System to bring people back and forth, so there won't be a big logjam of cars across this, close away from the library and the entrance. So, should streamline things quite a bit and make things a little bit easier for people to get back and forth, so I hope to see a lot of people there on Sunday, December 7th, from two to five at the library. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
I have no board report from the CPC. We're going to be meeting in the new year, we'll certainly be meeting in the new year, but it may be in the January, February timeframe. I do want to thank the police and the fire, yesterday we got a pretty bad two-car accident out in front of Victor Waffle House, and, and their response was right at rush hour, their response was fantastic, they were so quick. So, I want to appreciate them and their response to that accident, and also to the police for the, the big drug bust this week. A young fellow from Methuen decided to come down to Tewksbury, and he ended up getting busted. So, I just want to thank the police and fire for their continued great work.
Thank you. Three comments tonight. We, as a group, four of us anyways, met with the consultant who was working on the master plan, and I thought that was a productive discussion with that individual, and for whatever it's worth, to the town manager, I thought that the representative from the consulting company did a very good job in terms of demeanor and the questions that she was posing to interested parties. So, hopefully that will benefit the process in the long run. The economic development process review committee met on last Monday evening, and I have to say, it was a very productive, positive meeting, one of the better meetings that the group has had. And we have two openings on that committee, but I did receive today an application from an interested party, so I'm going to act, actually set that up for an interview shortly before our meeting on the sixteenth, for my colleagues to meet this particular individual. I don't know if they're there, but would be interested in advancing that, because we have two openings on that committee. So, we'll set that up, unless we have a need for an executive session, we'll do that maybe 6:45 and go from there. And the last item I have is just a disclosure, I want to make sure that I put it on the table. As has been our holiday custom for a number of years now, the, the board, by extension, our team and our office staff, who will be gathering this Friday evening in a social setting, all five of us likely will be in the room at the same time. There won't be any business discussed, as it's a social environment, but I do want to make that known in case people are taking license numbers. So, we want to make sure that that's out there for public consumption. And we meet again on the sixteenth of December, unless we have some reason beforehand, but that's our next meeting date, and it will either be 6:45 or 7:00 p.m., depending on how things shake out. So, I'd ask at this time if there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved, chairman.
Second.
We have a motion made and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.